Dad is not great. Table, really not good. There's nothing beautiful about aging. I left some things, including my phone, so my son is going to just show up at that door in a minute and I'm going to just jump up to grab it. Yep. Meanwhile, I'm eating dinner. I'm sorry.
Good evening. It's 7:00 PM on Tuesday, March 5th, 2019, and I call this meeting of Lexington Board of Selectmen back to order. The board had previously met at 6:30 this evening and immediately gone into executive session. Joining me this evening are on my right, Selectman Jill Hay, Selectman Joe Pato. I'm Susie Barry, the chair. On my left will be our recording secretary, Ms. Kim Seibert, who's out of the room at the moment, Selectman Doug Lucente, and we're very pleased to welcome Selectman Mark Sandin to the table tonight. He was elected at yesterday's town election to the one-year seat that had been vacated by Ms. Michelle Sacolo. On my far-left is our town manager, Mr. Jim Malloy, and our assistant town manager, Ms. Kelly Axtell. This evening's meeting is being broadcast live on Lex Media and taped for future on-demand viewing. If you're joining us here in the audience and have an electronic device of any type that may make a sound, we do ask that you power to silent, as it will interfere with our microphones. Should you rise to speak this evening, we ask that you give your name, address, and any relevant boards, committees, or affiliations, and you will be limited to three minutes. Is there anyone here in the audience this evening that may be recording? Seeing no one, we'll move on to public comment. Is there anyone here this evening that wishes to make a public comment on an item not covered elsewhere on the agenda? Seeing no one, before we move on to Selectman Concerns and Liaison Reports, I want to extend my sincere appreciation to the community for turning out yesterday in our annual town election, given some rather challenging weather circumstances earlier in the day. We challenged the community to at least a 10% turnout at our meeting last Monday night, and at our emergency meeting on Sunday evening, I believe we challenged them to over 15%, and they delivered. They did 17%, so congratulations on that. We should probably celebrate with a big pancake and bacon breakfast and a half pajama day, which is what everyone was supposed to do yesterday. Anyway, so thank you so much to the community for coming out to vote yesterday, and we want to welcome, as I said earlier, Mr. Sandin to the board, and in doing so, we present you with your Town of Lexington lapel pin.
Thank you.
And welcome.
Appreciate it.
And before I conclude my remarks about the town election, I want to specifically address Mr. Malloy, Ms. Axtell, Mr. Pinsenow, Chief Corr, Chief Sensabaugh, our Public Information Officer, Mr. Dugan, Superintendent of Schools, Dr. Julie Hackett, and all the other staff members that were involved in multiple phone calls this weekend, oh, and our Town Council meeting in Macarios, multiple phone calls this weekend on Saturday and Sunday, and coming in on Sunday for an emergency meeting to address the issue of whether or not we should postpone the election or make any changes to it. Mr. Pinsenow, I see you in the back of the room. Our sincere appreciation to the DPW staff, also, Mr. Malloy, if you can convey it to Mr. Cronin, to the public facilities staff. We have heard nothing but rave reviews for the cleanup that was done under difficult circumstances to make the roads passable, the sidewalks passable, and the poles accessible. We're not aware of any major hiccup, so to speak, in terms of the election. We didn't hear of anything major from Ms. Rice, so kudos to you and your teams. If you could spread the word that the board is truly appreciative, I would appreciate that. And now we'll move on to Selectman Concerns and Liaison Reports. Ms. Hay.
Thank you. I also wanted to add, in addition to all of the thank-yous that you just had for all of the pole workers who made it bright and early at the hardest part of the snow, so thank you to all of them as well. The one liaison report I have is from the Lexington Human Rights Committee. April is Fair Housing Month, and the LHRC is looking into additional fair housing training opportunities, like the ones that were run last year. They wanted to get a sense of how many seats they will need for that, and so if any members of the board are interested, please let me know if you would like to participate. I don't know that the date has been set yet. And if we have, if there are other appropriate either town officials, employees, or committee chairs that we think would be appropriate, just let me know, so we can figure out how many seats they need for that. The one other thing that came up at that meeting is that there is also a, I'm sorry. I'm still getting off of the plane. My brain is not entirely here. I spent an hour and a half in traffic, which was almost as long as I spent in the airport. But the overcoming unconscious bias training, which will be held, oh, it's being held right now, so that is no longer relevant, sorry about that, and the Training Active Bystander Training, which is coming up on Sunday, March 25th, from 7:00 to 9:00, and the sign-up to anybody in the community who's interested for that is trainingactivbystanders.org. Click on Events and choose, that session is actually being held in Arlington, at the Arlington Senior Center. So those are my reports.
Thank you, Ms. Hay, and we're glad you had safe travels. Mr. Pato.
I have nothing this week.
Thank you, Mr. Pato. I just want to add on, and thank the community for voting me back for another three years. Just remember, it's three years. And to mention that Mr. Malloy and I both received a letter from our sister city in Antony, France, and the community, we are in the process of putting together a delegation to visit Antony in September for their annual Wine and Cheese Festival, so they're looking for a delegation to come the middle of September, and you'll be hearing more about that as time goes on. Mr. Lucente.
Well, congratulations to my colleagues, Mr. Pato, Ms. Barry, and welcome to Mr. Sandin. I know, finally, I don't have an empty, empty seat next to me. I'm going to give, I hate to give a long update, but I, the update is for the meeting I went to for the Permanent Building Committee, and they had covered a lot of important topics, so I just want to run through them briefly, but this is not to be taken as an extension of our meeting time. They talked briefly about the fire headquarters and what's going on with the DEP approval to move forward with the project after they had found some contaminated soil, gave a brief update on the police station, site plan, and that's moving along. The visitor's center, we had a presentation by Don Mills, the architect, who explained that the MAAB had approved the access elevator, that was an open issue, because it's not a regular elevator, and the HDC also approved the project, and the building is on target to be lead silver. Further, they'll be advertising bids on March 13th and a bidder tour on March 19th, and the construction is still scheduled to take place from May 2019 to March 2020. Moving ahead, the architect from the Westview Cemetery also came to the meeting and gave an update on that project, and the committee had discussed what our board had discussed previously about making the building addition-ready, and very minor modifications need to take place, I believe, subsequent to that meeting. Mr. Pinsenow and Mr. Cronin met with the architect just to confirm some movement of some walls and things of that nature, so. And lastly, they discussed the sustainability policy, and the Permanent Building Committee was not in a position yet to fully discuss it, and they will be having a meeting on March 12th at 6:00 PM to discuss the sustainability policy, which I guess, I shouldn't say sustainability policy, because it's really integrated billing, building policy, and they'll be discussing that that evening. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lucente. Mr. Sandin, do you have anything you wish to share this evening?
I just want to say thank you to my wife for supporting me through my campaign, and to all the voters in Lexington who I had a chance to talk with through the campaign and learn from them, and if I haven't had a chance to talk with you, I'm interested in hearing your opinions and your thoughts of how we can work together, and I really am looking forward to working with this fantastic Board of Selectmen as we move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sandin. Mr. Malloy, is there a town manager's report this evening?
Yes, yes, I have a couple different things. The first item is, over the last couple of days, we've had some electrical issues in the downtown area, and so I wanted just to, I sent an update to the board, just to give you an idea of what was going on, but just for public information. Shortly after, it was last fall, I think, in November, we had a minor explosion in the downtown area, and one of the manholes flew off, and at the same time, because we were planning the Center Streetscape project, the town arranged a meeting with Eversource to have a discussion about what their infrastructure was like through the center of town, so that we could be assured that if we go forward with the Center Streetscape project, that they're not going to be digging it up a year or two later to put new lines in. That led to some additional meetings with our DPW Director, Dave Pinsenow, and our Town Engineer, John Livsy, and Eversource identified that they did need to make some upgrades to the downtown area, and they were going to be planning that over the next several months, but due to the, some recent problems they've been having, and back-to-back outages that were then compounded by another outage late last night, a little bit further south down Mass Ave, which was related to the first two outages, they have, their lead engineer that covers and is assigned to Lexington has informed the Community Relations Department that they're going to be pursuing, moving that up, and accelerating the improvements in the center of Lexington, and I was, I received an email last night stating that Ronet Goldstein, who is our Community Relations Person, would be seeking to establish a meeting with Dave in the next day, day or two, Dave Pinsenow, and so hopefully that continues to move forward. We'll keep putting some pressure on them to keep that going, so that that work is completed before we, you know, even put a shovel in the ground to do anything on the Center Streetscape.
Mr. Pinsenow?
They're meeting Friday.
They're meeting Friday.
Excellent.
So the meeting has been arranged, so Eversource is sticking with it, that they are really looking at, hopefully, accelerating their repair work. The next thing I wanted just to update the board is, we did get our, and to Dave, too, we did get our letter from the Governor's Office today, just confirming that our fiscal year '20, Chapter 90 money, will be $975,165. So that's approximately what we're expecting, but it's confirmed. Hopefully, the legislature does a little bit better, maybe they'll add to it. The third thing I had, and I'll, I wanted to bring this up tonight, because I was asked, last Friday, I went to the League of Women Voters, and I was asked a specific question during the Q&amp;A portion of it about the Minuteman Recreation Field Project, and on Thursday, we'd had a meeting with Minuteman and our staff, and their staff, and at that meeting, we had ended it with the idea that we would be postponing a project at this point in time, and so what we, since I brought, since I was there and I was asked that specific question, I didn't want to pretend that that didn't happen on Thursday, and yet I know I'd sent an email to the board, but I wanted, just for the public, we're going to be sending out a letter to a number of stakeholders that have been involved in this process for the last couple of years, and so if you'll indulge me for a second, I'll try to read this quickly, so that it doesn't, it's not my fault that the meeting goes longer.
It will still be done.
When he's here. So this is basically what the letter states right now, is that on Thursday, February 28th, staff from both the Town of Lexington and Minuteman High School Administration met to review, update, and determine next steps in preparation for the annual town meeting. In December of 2018, the town communicated with Minuteman the interest in continuing to forward with finalizing an IGA. It was also clear that the town's capital outlay could not tolerate the $8.5 million project. The town proposed to reduce scope, prioritizing those amenities of the complex for both organizations, which reduced the town's portion of $4.9 million. At this time, Minuteman began its request for information process. The RFI solicited interested partners for the full build of the athletic complex, as well as future phases of development, at the Minuteman High School campus. Minuteman shared the results of the RFI, which yielded eight interested organizations, including sports, aquatics, and other investors. The Minuteman School Committee continues to have the full build complex as a priority, and will be pursuing a request for proposal, which has a timeline through June of 2019. This information and timeline does not provide either organization to require time to finalize the details of an intergovernmental agreement for the 2019 Annual Town Meeting. Both the town and Minuteman have agreed to postpone further discussions relative to the town's participation until such time that the RFP process is complete. At that time, both organizations will determine if there continues to be an interest in pursuing a partnership for investment, operations, maintenance, and/or access to the athletic complex. Recreation Committee, along with the town decision, with the town recognizes this opportunity and the continued deficiency of fields in town, and will work together to solve this issue as a community. Recreation Committee and staff, thank you for all your support, feedback, and time towards this proposed article. And so that's the message that we'll go out to, it'll be edited a little bit, I think, because there's some typos, but that's essentially the message that'll be going out to all of the different stakeholders that have been participating.
Thank you, Mr. Malloy. Is that all? Okay. So we're going to move on to our first item for individual consideration this evening, which is an open-meeting law complaint submitted by Gene Colter. Because this particular agenda item deals with the Board of Selectmen and a request made by an individual that involves the Lexington Police Department, my husband is employed by the Town of Lexington, in particular, the Lexington Police Department, I will be recused on this item. Mr. Lucente will chair.
Colleagues, this evening before you is an open-meeting law complaint filed on February 25th, 2019, by Gene Colter. The open-meeting law regulations provide that the public body shall meet to review the complaint's allegations, take remedial action if appropriate, and send the complaintant a response and a description of any remedial action taken. The Attorney General's guidance permits the public body to delegate responsibility for responding to the complaint to Town Council, on the condition that the body first meet to do so. Staff recommends having the matter delegated to Town Council by the Board of Selectmen to handle the response. The, each body must, the procedure is, each body must disseminate copies of the complaint to each member, which I believe each of you have received, to meet, to review the complaint, which we're doing now, and take remedial action if it deems appropriate. Then each body that receives a complaint may delegate responsibility for responding to this, to Town Council, prior to the issuance of the response, and Lexington's response is due within 14 business days. If needed, we can have an extension to this. I would like to note two additional pieces of information. The basis of Ms. Colter's complaint is focused on her desire to speak at town meeting. Town meeting is one of the five exceptions to the open-meeting law. While town meetings are subject to legal requirements, they are not governed by the open-meeting law per General Law, Chapter 39, Sections 9 and 10. I would also point out that Ms. Colter's complaint is not signed. However, based on the advice of Town Council, recommends that we respond anyway. Are there any questions or comments from the board, Ms. Hay?
I was just going to amend something that you said. I believe that the actual dissemination of the original complaint has already happened. What we have tonight is the, and we've already delegated it to council to respond for us. What we're doing now is approving that response. Is that correct?
No.
Aren't we at a stage later?
We are delegating this to Town Council at this point. Mr. Pato, any questions or comments?
No, I don't have any questions or comments.
Mr. Sandin, any questions or comments?
No, I don't at this time.
So I move that we delegate responsibility to Town Council and the town manager as well, for responding to the open-meeting law complaint filed on February 25th, 2019, by Ms. Colter. Do you have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, the motion passes by a vote of four to zero.
Thank you, Mr. Lucente. And so at this point, if my colleagues agree, I would like to take an item out of order. Under item number four, 2019 Annual Town Meeting, we are due to get an update on Article 16F, the automatic meter reading, and for two reasons. The first of all, the first one, which is, Mr. Pinsenow is here to give that presentation to us this evening, and he had a long weekend, and not the good type of long weekend, like he was on a tropical vacation. He's been working 18- to 24-hour days, and the second of which is, he is extremely under the weather this evening, so I'm hoping we could hear him now and set him on his way so he can recover. Is that acceptable to the board?
Yes.
Seeing no objection, Mr. Pinsenow, would you join us, please?
Okay, so I'm going to go over the financial data related to the automated meter readers, and then Dave will be able to go over equipment issues, or how it will work, or any questions the board may have. I'm trying to do both of these at once. So this first slide here, what it has is the total project cost, which is $5,940,000, and how we would propose funding it. One would be through $1 million appropriated from the enterprise retained earnings account. $1,500,000 would be from, we would apply for an MWRA 0% loan that we're eligible for, and then $3,440,000 would be debt that would be issued through the water and sewer funds. We would be looking, because they're water meters, we would be looking only to borrow for 10 years, and using a 4% interest rate for the bonds, we have developed a debt service schedule, which shows that the debt service range is from, say, 624, the first year we're paying the full amount, down to about 514, and then the first and last years are a little bit off. And then the table next to it shows the debt summary by fund. It shows what would be charged to the water fund, what would be charged to the sewer Going down to the next page, we looked at three different ways of actually funding it. One is through a flat fee, one is through a tiered fee based on the current tier billing system, and then the third one is through a mix of a flat and a tiered rate. And so this first one is the flat rate on each meter. If you look at the table on the bottom, it shows that at $20, we would raise $595,200 a year. And then up on the top part of the table, it shows what the impact would be for a low user at 50, 500 cubic feet, one at 120,000 cubic feet, and then one at 240,000 cubic feet. And you can see that it impacts the low user as far as a percentage increase. The yellow column in the very middle of the table is what the increase would be over the current increase, so it would be, for the low user, it would be a 7.4% increase, for the average user, a 2.6% increase, and for high users, it would be a 0.9% increase. When we discussed at the staff level, we were concerned about this particular rate structure, because the low users tend to be senior citizens, and it puts the greatest burden on the senior citizens, and the least amount of burden on larger businesses and larger water users. And so we actually went through all three different scenarios, and we do have, when I'm done, we do have a recommendation on prioritizing what our recommendation of the board is. So the second one is a, putting it through the rates on a tiered system, and again, the yellow column shows what the increase would be for the 50, 120, and 240,000 cubic feet users, and it basically works out to a 3.7% increase for the low users, 3.8% increase for the average user, and 3.8% for the high-end users. And then if you go to the combination of a flat fee and putting it into the rates, the flat fee would go down to $10 per meter, and then with the, inserting into the rates in order to raise enough funds, the increases would end up being 5.7% for the low users, 3.3% for the average user, and 2.5% for the high user. So our recommendation to the board is to, the top priority or top recommendation would go with the tiered rate, and then the combination rate, and then the flat rate is our last recommendation. This table here shows the, just in a table format, what the impact of each one of those looks like. The far-left is the fiscal year '19 actual, the second to the left is the flat fee proposal, the second to the right is the tiered rate, and then the one furthest to the right is the combination, flat fee and tiered rate. So Dave, do you want to go through the project overview, then?
So just quickly, I'll just kind of recap where we're at. So the project overview, evaluate our current metering practices and technology. As you all know, we build twice a year, and there are some limitations and other items that factor into that. We're looking at recommendations, and then evaluate how that would work with both the customers and with the staff. So, so some of the key items that we were looking at, transitioning away from the semi-annual billing, go more with the quarterly billing, which helps to spread the payments out. It helps in an enterprise fund with cash flow, so there are a number of things we can do there. Help reduce the high incidence of abatements, because we'll be able to identify leaks in a more timely manner, and it should be noted that finding the leaks is not only a help, you know, to the town, it's a help to the homeowner, or the business resident, because those can be very costly if undetected. So if you have a leak that's been going on for four months, we have a lot of people that go away, they don't know that there's something happening, that's very costly when you get into replacing floors, mold issues, things of that nature. So we'd be able to catch those much quicker, help the town save on the water end, but also help the homeowner out. And then providing tools to really help with, we've talked a lot about water conservation and our efforts to do that. It would give people an opportunity to really zero in on their own water use on a daily basis, which we think will be a key factor. So if you look at our metering, and actually, the, we found, unfortunately, there's a typo here, but the, I just have to go back to the, the number of meters actually domestic is 10,667, so it is right on the, on the rate sheets that you have, it just didn't get transferred here, and we're at 4,213 irrigation meters. So you can see that distribution, and then the, the age of our meters up here, and so what we would be targeting is those, are those meters that are 15 years and older, to get those out of the system, and replacing those. So we actually have some meters that have been replaced even in the last month. Those meters are very good and could easily accommodate the AMR piece that would go on to it, so, so we're not looking at replacing all meters. If we, I should note, if we did not do any AMR, we would still be on the hook to replace those meters, so there still would be an ongoing program in order to do that. So if we go to the next one, just some of the benefits that we have, and again, these are things that we have been talking about. You know, the meter readers, right now, there are, we have to get onto people's property, we have to get into pits, things of that nature, so more of a safety and efficiency standpoint. It would be a more equitable distribution of the MWRA use charges. We would be able to redirect staff time to other needed programs that we don't currently have time to do, but are important, such as gate and valve maintenance, sewer flushing, things of that nature. We'd be able to do the quarterly billing. We would be able to detect more rapidly meter tampering, stuck meters, reverse flows, anything like that, the troubleshooting. It would help to quicker, more quickly resolve customer issues, the future conservation that I mentioned, and some management initiatives through that, finding the leaks more quickly, and then that customer access to their accounts. So this one is just kind of showing you that this is something the customer would be able to pull up, so they'd be able to kind of chart their own use. The system would be set up in a way that, that we would be alerted if they went over their average use, that, you know, we would be able to reach out and say, is something, is everything okay, is, you know, you may have a leak, we can send somebody out to check that. So it's really a much more efficient way to do business. And then, these are just some area communities that have already implemented systems, and that is, I think, what we had for the update, so. So again, that's, that's what we're looking at from an implementation and staffing standpoint.
Thank you, Mr. Pinsenow. Questions or comments? Ms. Hay?
So thank
So thank you, and appreciate you being here and still upright. Quick question, the slide that showed the image of the actual meters, is this just set against the, no, no, the picture of the meters themselves, your first slide, I think it was, that one. Are those just lying in the grass for demonstration purposes, or is that the way they would be?
No, 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 those are just for to show you.
Okay, because I was going to ask, it did raise in my mind, what is the installation? You know, where are these placed and who's responsible for making sure that landscaping equipment or otherwise, you know, anything else doesn't happen to them?
Okay, so the way that this would work is we would, in all probability, contract this out. So we would be having a contractor go in to replace the meters.
Right.
So we would make appointments, et cetera, to do that. So the contractor would go in, take the old meter out, put the new meter in. It would already have the hardware on it to do the reading.
So it would be inside?
Inside, oh yes.
That's the part I didn't understand, I'm sorry. I thought it was external to the house.
No, it attaches right to the meter. And then for those that we didn't have to replace the meter, they would just go in and put the reading device on to the meter.
Okay.
And we have checked, those meters are capable of accepting that technology.
Okay, that was something I didn't pick up before, these are installed inside homes, they're not on the outside.
Yeah, the meters are inside people's homes, yes, or businesses.
Right, inside the building though, okay.
Yes.
And then, I think, you know, we've had a lot of conversation over the years about this project and its, you know, sort of return on investment from a purely fiscal perspective. But what I appreciate tonight, and, you know, as I read through the packet, are the number of ways that this actually has a return for the staff and for efficiency, and actually for the consumer, the water consumers, the residents, to be able to both better conserve, better manage, and detect issues. So I still have some concerns about the cost of the project. I do like the recommendation of the tiered implementation so that it is more equitably distributed. I appreciate that. But I still have some pause at the cost of the project in total.
Thank you, Ms. Hay, Mr. Pato.
So thank you for the presentation. There are a couple of things that I'd like to see more on. First, let me start by saying, I think that this is a great program to move forward with, that the primary value here is equity and efficiency for staff. And by equity, I mean that people are actually paying for the water they use, and they're not caught by surprise with a substantial consumption that they were otherwise unable to detect. I'll note that in your charts, you show that 65% of the meters are over 10 years old. And while the industry standard isn't exactly years of use, it's more how much water flows through the meter. Meters tend to age, and as they age, the impellers, especially for those mechanical meters or the older ones, start measuring less than they're actually consuming. So the older the meter, the less likely that that household is paying their fair share. What I'd like to see a detail on is, the concern I've heard from a lot of people is, that seems like a high price tag. But this is the price tag for us to do all the work, and as far as I can tell, doesn't discount for the fact that 65% of our meters are over 10 years old, and we would need to go and replace those in any case.
And I should clarify, we're targeting meters that are 10 years and older to do the, to replace. So we are looking at that.
Right, so what I would like to understand is, what's the incremental cost of doing this? Because, you know, if it would cost us, I'm going to make up numbers, $10 million to replace all of the 10-year-old meters, and this project was going to cost $10 million, the net cost is nothing. What's, you know, what is it that we're actually going to do, cost the town for doing the project? And otherwise, I think that there is a huge amount of value in doing this. So I am hopeful that we have a number that can make it a little more palatable and easy to understand what it is that we're actually asking for.
Thank you, Mr. Pato. So I'm a little bit confused, and maybe I missed something in the presentation. In Mr. Malloy's presentation, if I look at any of your charts, at the bottom it says revenue semi-annual flat fee, and then you have a number for annual revenue flat fee, so semi-annual is twice a year? And Mr. Pinceno talked about billing four times a year.
It was based on semi-annual, but it would go, obviously, it would just split it into four. The same number, total number, would be split by four, not two.
Okay.
So if it was $20, it would be $40 a year. So that would work, instead of $20 semi-annually, it would be $10 a quarter, if it passed and we went quarterly billing.
Okay, and then is this for the first year, is this for every year?
That fee would be in place for all of the years, although towards the end, it would be raising more than we needed. So we might have the ability to reduce it.
Okay, and then another part here that I think is a really important part of the story, and unless you sit at this board and pay attention to our consent agenda the last two or three or four years, you have no idea what gets approved by our water sewer abatement board. Well, I know you do, but the greater community doesn't, and town meeting certainly doesn't. And that is a story that I'm afraid is not getting told here. And I'd like to, I know you kind of have the data, but if you could put that data together, and I know the board had asked for more information when abatements went over a certain threshold, a dollar threshold, if you could, you know, pick out the three or four biggest categories, you know, meter, unintended consequences, or a water main break, whatever, I think that's a really important story to tell. You know, when you go to your listing of benefits, I mean, you can say abatements, but unless you've been through the abatement process or had a problem, you don't know what that means. And you don't realize how much, kind of, we've had to abate and give back. So I think that's a huge part of this story to tell. The other thing is, the timeline to replace the meters, we're going to look to do this over?
So we would most likely do it in three phases in order to get it implemented and just the sheer volume to deal with. But we're, if approved, we would still work through that bid process to see which, the better way to do it. But right now, we're set up into three areas to read, so, three sections. So we would probably replace them that way, so that we would have one whole section up and running on a new system, the next whole section, the next whole section. I think just the sheer volume that we would have to deal with in implementing the new technology with staff, training, and everything, to do it all at once may cause issues, but we would still look at that.
Okay, so then if you look at this picture on the screen, and either you're putting in the new meter or you're putting the thing on top of the meter, how does that data get communicated? Does this need to hook up to power, is it Wi-Fi, is there a battery? Is it kind of like, you know, if you have FiOS and your battery's so good, and then you need a new battery? How does, I'm just kind of curious if there's something else the homeowner's going to need to do or be made aware of?
I'll defer to Margaret from Weston and Sampson.
Sure, good evening and welcome.
Good evening, Margaret McCarthy, Weston and Sampson. To answer your question, that is connected to a box that is smaller than what we might think of as a cable box that has a radio in it, that would then communicate the information from that register head to a series of towers, radio antennas, you know, anywhere from three to six, depending on the technology chosen. So yes, that does have a battery life in it, but most of the meters now also have batteries associated with them too.
Okay, so it's going to be another beeping in your basement that drives you crazy till you figure out what it is?
No noise.
Okay.
No noise.
Oh, I mean when the battery goes?
Nope, it sends a signal.
Sends a signal to you?
Yes.
And then you notify the homeowner, and you come and replace the battery for them? Huh, I like that, because that Verizon beep in the basement, it can make you crazy, anyway. That's my last question, thank you, Mr. Lucente.
Thank you, Dave, for the presentation. So we're talking about residential properties a lot here, this would also go in all commercial installations as well?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes.
And I just want to make 100% clear what the replacements are. I know it's three phases, but as far as age of the meters, we're talking 100% all meters. So if a meter was installed two years ago, we would do that?
No, we would replace those that are 10 years and older. The ones that are under that, all we would have to do is put the radio unit on to them.
Because the technology is up to speed on those?
Yes, and our thought through this was, if we just replaced a meter, like I said, in the last couple of weeks, that meter is good, and we've gone with the, yeah, so we've upgraded, we don't have the, we're not replacing with mechanical meters anymore. So they are more accurate, more durable, longer lasting. So we would just need to put those radio units on those meters.
Okay, so it's still an installation in the home, correct? So just one last thing, I'll reiterate with Ms. Barry, mentioned about the abatements and the total amount of those abatements. I think that's a real important part of the story, and I think Mr. Pato made a very good point about what's that incremental cost on the ones that are 10 years older, 10 years old and older, and how, you know, how does that play into the story? Because it is, I'm not there yet with the return on investment, I'm struggling with it just because it is such a big number, and I, you know, keep harping back to, hate to keep doing this, but the older presentations and what was sort of guesstimated earlier on that this would cost, and, you know, it's inflated, obviously, significantly, so the ROI, you know, obviously needs to be there. And I believe that we probably can't support it with the right information, but I think to bring something to town meeting that doesn't really explain the return on investment might spoil this a little. And lastly, I would support the tiered structure that was outlined by Mr. Malloy, and that's my comments.
Thank you, Mr. Lucente. Mr. Sandin?
Yes, speaking about the tiered rate, I also think that is probably the best option. But I was wondering, in the presentation, you show in option one and option three, you show a difference for domestic and irrigation, but that isn't shown in the tiered rate, and I was wondering what the explanation is for that.
Yeah, only because they would be paying the same on the domestic as well as irrigation, and it was just showing on the other two, because if there was a flat rate, it would apply to both the domestic and irrigation meters.
Okay, thank you. The other comment, I would agree with Ms. Hay and Mr. Lucente. I haven't had the opportunity to see payback analysis. I'd love to see some sort of return on investment payback analysis in order to make a recommendation. I have another question, which is more sort of about the existing meters that are already out in the field. Do we not have meters out there that are already automatically reporting?
That's correct. That's correct, you do not. They are, have to be read with a meter reader who goes up and touches the outside or has to get up close. You do not have the ability to get information quickly.
So even though I have a meter in my basement and nobody knocks on my door, somebody's doing a thing on the outside?
Yeah, and you would typically have a touchpad on the outside, that's where they, but they have to walk up to that with the reading gun and grab that information.
Okay, so the other question that Mr. Lucente was, no, excuse me, Ms. Barry was talking about, was the battery replacement, I didn't quite catch, is this every five years? Did you say we have to replace the battery?
No, the warranty on the batteries now is 15 years minimum, which is about the time you start replacing those meters.
Okay, and my final question is, what's the value of going to quarterly billing as opposed to semi-annual billing? And it seems like there might be some expense there, and I was just wondering what the return on that was?
Well, there wouldn't be additional expense. What it would do for us, well, do a couple of things. It would help the customer in that your payments would be more spread out, so you wouldn't have two larger bills, you'd be able to spread that out over four payments. The thing for staff then is, with the way that the enterprise works and our fiscal year, cash flow is not always where it needs to be with that enterprise fund. So this would ensure more of that cash flow in order to keep that fund viable. So that's, so be kind of both of those benefits.
So thank you, I would be interested in hearing some more of those answers that we were requesting, thank you.
So, and just to clarify overall, is that when you're talking return on investment, you have to keep in mind that part of that return are all of these intangible benefits that we're looking at. So it's not going to be a straight, you know, dollar-for-dollar return on investment. That's just not what these systems do. But we feel that there's a lot of those other intangible benefits that factor that in that make this a worthwhile project to pursue.
Ms. Hay, did you have something?
Just briefly, I mean, it's potentially negligible, but it is two additional billings that we would do townwide in the year, and I don't know if we have a handle on what that runs, but that is some cost.
Mr. Pato?
And just because I neglected to mention it, I too support the embedding the cost of the meters in the rates.
Thank you. Questions or comments from the audience?
David Cantor, member of the Capitol Expenditures Committee. In our review of the report that was presented, we also came to a conclusion that the equity aspect may be far more significant, even though it's expensive. We haven't yet voted as to whether it does pay off for it, but we were not convinced by the return on investment, both for the intangibles as well as even the attitude toward the intangibles, if you would. We also were concerned about what the, what I characterized to you, Dave, was the lost water. I think it's important that we have some data presented to town meeting that shows because of the meters in general, from the day they're put in, start diminishing their accuracy. And according to the report we received, they always diminish in accuracy, they never over-report, hardly ever over-report. So I think it's crucial we understand what the effect of the lost water is, if that's a suitable phrase, and how this will get people paying, as you identified, but what they're doing. The question also would come as to, what is the effect on the payment when the people start ending up paying for what they're actually using? So I think it's appropriate for us to understand how the redistribution of the cost, independent from the cost of covering this installation process. So we want to know what the rate usage comes, and how do you explain it to the people? Because it's somewhat of a zero-sum game, I guess. But I think we should make clear to the residents how that goes in addition to the suggestions on how to pay for it. And we'd look for that information as we've asked before for, thank you.
We are putting that together, so we will be getting that information for you.
Thank you, Mr. Cantor. Any further questions or comments from the audience, Mr. Malloy?
Yeah, I just wanted to add one other thing, because there's been a couple of comments about the cost of the project, because it is an expensive project. But Dave Pinceno said something that's sort of key, it's the sheer volume of the number of meters. And I know that some are complete meter replacements, and some are just meter head replacements, but on average, it works out to $411 per meter. When you think about the cost of the equipment that we're purchasing, plus having the labor to install it, it's really just that there are 14,450 meters, that it really becomes such a large number. If you look at it on a per-meter basis, it doesn't really seem like it's that extraordinary to consider both the equipment and the labor to install.
Thank you, Mr. Malloy. Mr. Cantor?
If I have any time left, very quickly, I noticed in the report that we have not been asking the large commercial users to inspect their meters and report. And I think that we ought to understand what is our methodology for letting the biggest users not identify what their underpaying may be, and it probably is because they have the same, facing the same issue with the meters. So I think it's been a mistake for us to avoid understanding that all along. And I think it's important for the presentation to make clear what we have learned about how well the commercial meters are doing in the aggregate and what their proportionate contribution, it's not contribution, their payment is, toward meeting our water needs, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cantor. Mr. Pinceno?
Just also, some of the cost does entail the software that goes along with the program, implementing the program, and those receivers that we would need to place through town. So there is some of that, and we've so there is some of that, and we, we can break that down for you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Malloy, I think I neglected to mention, I could also support the tiered structure, as my colleagues did, any final questions or comments from the board, Mr. Sandin?
My, my comment goes back to this radio reporting system, I think this is slightly variant of what Mr. Pato said, is that the main difference in cost between replacing the meters, with your proposal, but if you weren't going to do the AMR, is the difference just basically the difference in cost, the cost of these meters, I mean, the, the radio, the cellular radio?
Yeah, would, well, it would be the, like I said, the software that you need along with it, the receivers that you need along with it, and the cost of the meters, so we'll work that up, that incremental cost, because we will have to replace meters regardless, so, so there is a cost for the unit that goes on, so we'll, we'll go ahead and get that.
Having deployed these types of radio systems in my, my business, I'm familiar with some of the downsides of this, I would be interested in understanding what the underlying technology is, because we've had some issues where the technology moves on, and then you have to go back and replace all these radios later on when the technology moves on, so that would be something I'd be interested in looking at, the other thing that we've, we've seen as an issue, is that sometimes the reporting system goes down, and I was wondering if there might be some kind of backup system, in case the radio frequencies are not operating properly.
Okay, Mr. Lucente?
Just one thing, you, you can clarify it now or later, I just, there's a nuance that I'm struggling with, I'm hearing that these meters are more accurate, and they will capture lost water, Mr. Cantor was speaking, well, if we're losing water, and we're not getting revenue from that, that's not fair, and I agree with that, trying to understand, and again, you don't have to tell us now, but I'd love to hear this at town meeting, how does that actually, the radio part actually capture the water loss? If it's, if the meter, the meter's losing the water, not the radio, correct? Is that, so it's any, any of the 10-year and younger, are we making an assumption that those aren't losing water because, strictly because of their age?
Yes, so the newer
Even though they may be?
They will, they will eventually start to, because mechanical meters start, but those will become, on the regular maintenance cycle, need to be repaired, you're
Including the 10, 10, oh, sorry, once this meter you're going to put in becomes 10 years old, so let's talk about 20, 30?
We're recommending to go with solid-state meters, which are different than mechanical meters.
Okay.
And the solid-state meters do not have the moving parts, like the mechanical meters that are currently installed in the system.
Okay, so the water loss would continue with the meters that are 10 years old and younger, as they age out?
That's correct.
Okay, so it's not a complete, in our analysis, it's not a complete, we stop all water loss?
That, that is correct.
Okay, I just want to make that clear, because it's a nuance.
And, and the only thing the radio is doing is giving you the ability to see it sooner than when you read.
Yeah, and we, we are going with solid-state with our bids now, anyway, and not the mechanical, so, yes.
Thank you, Mr. Lucente, anything further from the board? Seeing nothing, Mr. Pinsono, I want to thank you so much for the update this evening, drive safe, take some NyQuil, we'll talk to you in a few days.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome, so now we're going to go back to our original order on the agenda, we'll move on to item number two, review and approve the local initiative petition, the LIP application for Jefferson Drive, and joining us is Ms. Liz Rust from our Regional Housing Services Office, good evening, Ms. Rust, and welcome. There you go.
Hi, yeah, I'm Liz Rust from the Regional Housing Services Office, and I'm here today with the LIP application, that's the Local Initiative Program application, for the Jefferson, the three affordable units at the Jefferson Drive special permit development, so the LIP LAU, that's what that's shorthand, Local Initiative Program, Local Action Unit, this is a state program used to regulate locally permitted units, affordable units, so these come through as a special permit from the zoning board or the permit issuing agency, and this is, provides the regulations with the program requirements and guidelines, the income limits, asset limits, and all those requirements, as well as the affordable housing deed restrictions, marketing requirements, and allow the units to get registered on the subsidized housing inventory, so there are a lot of benefits for using the LIP program, and the LIP program requires that the application before it goes to DHCD for approval be signed by the local housing board here, the Lexington Housing Partnership, and also the Board of Selectmen, it then goes to the state, DHCD, for their approval, it comes back to you in terms of a regulatory agreement that the town is a party to, that places the perpetual affordable housing restriction on the property, and then the marketing begins. The package that you have here has the sample, well, the, the marketing plan plus sample application and advertising material, plus the floor plans, site plans, and special permit. These three units would join the existing 30 units of restricted ownership affordable units in Lexington, so that you, that's a 10% increase through this project, and I can say that I'm here as the Regional Housing Services Director in one hat, and I'm also here under the Sudbury Housing Trust as a lottery agent, and they have been hired by the developer, so I think I have three hats on right now, and I have filed those three hats with the town clerk in terms of disclosures to that effect.
Thank you, Ms. Rust, any questions or comments from the board, Ms. Hay? Thank you, Mr. Pato.
So I was unable to attend, attend the Housing Partnership meeting when this was addressed, I see that there, I think there's already a signature there, was there any concern expressed by the partnership, or is this okay? I'm seeing heads nod up and down.
So, Ms. Fouda, if you could come to the microphone, please, if you don't mind, so Jerry Fouda, the Chairman of the Lexington Housing Partnership, is in the room, and we're going to ask her for the feedback from her committee's meeting.
Jerry Fouda, Chair for the Lexington Housing Partnership, our board unanimously voted in favor of support for the LIP application for Jefferson Drive.
Thank you, Ms. Fouda, Mr. Pato?
Thank you, that was very helpful.
I have no questions this evening, Ms. Rust, I just want to thank you for a very comprehensive package, as usual, Mr. Lucente?
Thank you, Ms. Rust, this is great, I think it's a good program, I'm glad to see these moving forward into the inventory, could, could you just, for the folks watching at home, maybe explain how someone would apply, and, and where they would go to do that, or where they could find information on how to apply for this, and also, could you tell us when we think they'll be available?
Thank you.
I know it's in the packet, but I think so folks listening.
So from here, as I mentioned, it goes to the state for approval, and they have, you know, a one to three-month timeline, so we haven't set target marketing dates, the lottery application process is a 60-day window, so once the applications become available and are posted, they'll be posted on the town website, they'll be advertised in print and electronic avenues in Lexington, they'll be available on the rhsohousing.org website, and that application period would be open for at least 60 days, and then there'll be a lottery after that.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lucente, Mr. Sandin?
Thank you for your presentation, so after these homes go through the lottery, and somebody wins the lottery, what, what is the expected timeframe that they would be able to stay in these houses, and how, I mean, they own them forever, is that how this works, and?
Yeah, so they're, they're condominiums, I think they're condominiums, yes, thank you, and so that they're, just like buying a condominium, they'll go through a purchase and sale, they'll have a deed, they'll have a restriction, a deed rider attached to the deed, but other than that, they're just a owner in the condominium.
And when they resell?
They have a permanent, because of the permanent affordable housing restriction, there's a resale requirement to that, so the price is always restricted to eligible households.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Thank you, Mr. Sandin, and just to clarify, Jefferson Drive is the name of a new street in town, so some people may be confused or curious exactly to where it is, it is off Grove Street, it is the 29-unit condominium development that's going in off Grove Street, almost at the top of the hill going into Bedford on the right.
I think it's called Zero Grove Street.
Yeah, but
Yeah, right.
In terms of when you're driving, you know, I think of zero at the beginning, which would be a couple miles down the road, anyway, questions or comments from the audience? Seeing none, whoops, okay.
Betsy Weiss, 8 Dover Lane, and Vice Chair of the Housing Partnership Board, Housing Partnership Board, as Jerry said, we voted unanimously for it, my only request would be, because there's two local units and one general pool unit, just to make sure that the eligible residents, so the eligible, so people who are eligible, current Lexington residents, families
What page you on?
What page am I on, page three.
Page, I'm sorry, page?
Pardon?
Could you repeat the page number?
Page three.
Page three.
Families with children enrolled in Lexington schools, and Lexington municipal employees and school employees, and people who work in town, so this is advertised and marketed, so people really know about this, we had a forum several years ago, and Jennifer Van Kampen came to it, and several school teachers were there, and a municipal worker, and they were really interested in homeownership opportunities, and this is a perfect opportunity.
Thank you, Ms. Weiss, I will say that that was on page seven of what was in the board's packet and what's in the public packet, but on page four and five is a very comprehensive list of where this is going to be advertised, in terms of ads, flyers, email notices, it's quite an impressive list, it really is.
I think where we get a lot of local response is the notice to town committees and employees, and we sort of work through that with the, the town staff, and the emails going out to all the groups, and then people forward them to people they know, who might be interested that way.
And I see that, and then the Lexington civic groups and churches, temples, you have an interested person database, the town website, the Veteran Services Agent Council on Aging, I mean, it's, it's probably 20, 25 different places where it goes, at least.
We, we think that, that getting local applicants is really the benefit of the program.
Okay, any further questions or comments from the audience? Seeing none? I move to approve and authorize the chairman to sign the local initiative program application for a comprehensive permit for the Jefferson Drive development, is there a second?
Second.
Moved in second, and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it is unanimous, five to nothing, thank you very much, Ms. Rust, have a good night, I haven't, I haven't been able to say that in a while, five to nothing, see, that's why there was emphasis on that, woo, we got a full, we got a full band here, guys, we've got to keep it together, moving on to item number three, the comprehensive plan update, and joining us this evening is Ms. Carol Kowalski, our Assistant Town Manager for Development, and Ms. Kowalski, if, once you get in place, if you could introduce who's presenting with you, that would be great.
Thank you, Madam Chairman, and members of the board, we're going to do this bluegrass style, sharing one mic, so with me tonight is, are the co-chairs of the Comprehensive Plan Advisory Committee, Sarah Felton and Ray Yuan, so we're going to have to get very close to this mic, and one thing I want to start with is to let the board know about the accomplishments Lexington has achieved since the first, the prior plan, the plan was adopted 2003, and there are at least a dozen significant items that were implemented from that plan, one of them was the Lexington Housing Partnership Board, who you just heard from, the board created that partnership in 2003, an inclusionary zoning bylaw was brought to town meeting, that was a recommendation from the 2003 plan, one of the recommendations was to see about introducing some housing in the center, and the town did that through implementing the Lexington Place Condominiums Plan Development District, there are others I could go into, and I can return to that later if the board is interested, but I think it's important to say that, because so often people think, oh, we, we didn't implement anything from that plan, but you did, Lexington did, so that, that should be recognized.
I don't know which to use, so, good evening, so as most of you know, Massachusetts has, in Massachusetts, comprehensive plans are adopted by the planning board, the planning, the Lexington Planning Board appointed 13 members to the Comprehensive Plan Advisory Committee, the members, the 13 members represented all nine precincts within the town of Lexington, today, we, we have lost a member, so I will just put a plug out there, we are looking for a member from Precinct One, because we do not have representation at this time from Precinct One, and we do have a list of all members, should the Board of Selectmen wish to see the list of, of members, and just really quickly, I just am going to quickly go over how we started, the last plan was completed over 15 years ago, is that correct, 2003, and so we have been working since early spring of last year to try and learn about the town, from the town, to envision what the future might be, and we will move into a sort of planning process, and a plan with, hope for a plan adoption in late 2020. This process is not linear, it involves intensive community engagement at all phases of the process, and we're going to walk you through some of the things that we've done to, to engage the community, starting in June, I believe, was our first real community engagement with the public.
So the first order of activities we have done is to invite expert and also stakeholders that has experience in planning from other communities to talk about the regional issues and trends, so that the committee members will be familiarized what the overall trends in three areas, the transportation and economic development, as well as the housing, so each area, there are two panels combined, that illustrating how the regional issues are trying to go, and those are two repetitive panels, they're the same, because not every member will be able to participate some of the panels, we have done two of the panels, so that was the first order of business, is to getting ourselves educated about the regional issues and trend.
This was intended to provide the climate in which Lexington will be updating its plan, focusing on transportation, housing, and economic development, since these factors external to Lexington have a significant impact on transportation, housing, and economic development within Lexington, the panels included state and regional experts, as Ray mentioned, and the video, there are video links of these panels on the town website, I noticed today that a couple of the links are broken, so I'm going to get in touch with Lex Media, it may be that they wanted to take them off their server, but they're still quite relevant, so we'll see if we can have them reactivate those links.
In June, we had a public presentation at Cary Hall, where we looked at issues across six areas, demographics, economic development, housing, land use, resources, and transportation, and we provided an opportunity for the citizens of Lexington to look at strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and
Threats.
Threats, thank you, I know the short word, I don't know the long word. Threats, thank you. I know the short word. I don't know the long word. And then in October, we presented at the League of Women Voters to sort of introduce the Comprehensive Planning Committee and the process to that, those stakeholders.
We have also utilized a particular form of, a particular form that soliciting public inputs, is called the World Cafe, and it's a very flexible format, so that participants can provide their feedback, as well as their opinions on a range of issues. So we have done three World Cafes, and all this data that collected from the World Cafe events were distilled by our planning board, planning department staff, that is available on, on the website, I believe.
Soon it will be available on the web.
We have seen it, and it has, for example, the most often mentioned issues that, from the public.
So right now, those things are available on the town website. We are in the process of launching a specific website as another outreach sort of mechanism to the community that will include links to all of our data and all of our analysis. Just really quickly, from those, those events that we've spoken of so far, the most, the most, the most raw mentions were about transportation, and followed by housing, public facilities, including the schools, and finally, economic development. But that's a very brief overview of sort of where it stood after those, and we have more events coming up. There's a lot of ways to slice and dice the output of the World Cafes. For those of you who participated in the World Cafe, you know, you might recall that one of the questions that was posed to the participants was, what do you value? Another was, what, on what areas, in what areas has the town made positive progress? The third question was, what concerns you? What are some issues of concern? And the last one was, what should be prioritized? And for the should be prioritized, the three that came in with the highest mentions were affordable housing options, the town center, and walkability. So more of that analysis will be on the new website.
Because the comprehensive planning is such a wide-ranging issue, and we have various aspects that are all tied into how Lexington is going forward with. So the committee decided to create various working groups to work on a more focused area of the, of the overall planning. And the first of three working groups that we created is the housing, economic development, and transportation. So those were the mostly, the hot-button issues that the people are interested in. We have had working group meetings in the past months, and we are also forming three new working groups: the historical natural resources, the open spaces, public facility working groups. In working with the planning board as well, we just conducted a planning board workshop last Thursday, and getting, it was rescheduled, so we had kind of like a smaller crowd than usual. We would like to have more crowds, so the, the plan is that we're going to conduct more of such working groups, because the workshop will be able to create more broad input from the community, rather than just the committee members, ourselves, just thinking aloud, or some expert is creating their opinions, because we are planning for Lexington, and a broader input from the community is warranted.
So the panels that we had initially were focused on regional trends, and we are about to begin panels with, again, expertise on more local, town-based trends. So on March 7th, we have our first panel. Dr. Mary Ann Cohen, the Director of the Center for Social Research at Framingham State University, and Dr. Maureen Cavanagh, the Director of Planning and Assessment for Lexington Public Schools. They will present on Lexington's population trends and projections, in order to give us an idea of who we are planning for. And the ideas that come out of these panels, we have several more already scheduled. Do you want to help me out here, Carol?
Sure.
March 21st, I mean, I think they're on the next slide. March 21st, housing and residential, transportation on April 4th, economic development on April 23rd. But the things that come out of these panel discussions will provide direction to us in the plan elements. And all of those panels are recorded by Lex Media, and the links, again, as Carol says, should be on the town website. We'll work on making sure they're on.
One of the issue the committee member noticed is that when we are looking at the regional issues, the regional trend, and sometimes Lexington may not be conforming to those regional trends. Specifically, for example, in the demographics trend and the school population trend, Lexington sometimes is sort of like an outlier to those trends, and we are mindful of that.
Some of you may know, just to follow up on Ray's point a bit, some of you may know that most of the communities in the Commonwealth are having dip in school enrollments, and Lexington is one of 12 communities that is not seeing a dip. So some of what's coming up next with the Comprehensive Plan, the presentations will go through the spring, and then in the summer, as you know, people go away, and we try not to have public engagement during the summer when we don't have the full public here. But what we can do is use online platforms like Bang the Table, which is an established platform for using the internet to participate, so that you don't have to come out to a town building on a weeknight and leave your family. I told Sean Dugan that I think we're going to call these pajama parties, so that people know they can participate in their pajamas without, you know, if they have insomnia in the middle of the night, they can remember that they saw the survey, and they can go on and, or see the little video and comment on it. We will also be coordinating with other planning initiatives that are going on, like the age-friendly communities, the municipal vulnerability grant, facilities planning, all of which is relevant to the physical plan of the Comprehensive Plan Update. So look for those things coming. And then the more challenging, frankly, part of the plan, where we have to make some challenging decisions. We have to ask the community to try to make some challenging decisions, and actually look at the map and say, where do you want to try to achieve these, these things? That's when that kind of online platform would be very helpful. Then we'll resume actual live engagement in the fall, draft the plan elements, and build public support for the plan, so that when the planning board adopts the plan, I think many of you know that it becomes town policy. That then signals to property owners and other people in the real estate market and town residents, this is what we want for Lexington. So I'll just put up the next slide. Right now, we have two websites. One is, of course, the town website, and you can go to LexingtonMA.gov/compplan to sign up on the town website for emails, if you want to stay informed on the comp plan. And the new website will soon have a formal launch, and that's LexingtonMA.gov/compplan with a hyphen. We're going to look into trying to change it to the name of the plan. The plan was named last week?
Yes.
Very recently, Lexington Next. So very soon, we're going to stop calling it the comp plan and calling it Lexington Next. So we'll be happy to take any questions, and Richard Cannelli from the planning board is here as well.
Thank you very much. Questions or comments from the board, Ms. Hay?
So thank you. It's nice to have everyone able to hear all of what's been going on. I know in the last year, you've had a lot of these meetings. As you know, the Special Permit Residential Development Ad Hoc Committee is also working on some of these housing issues, and at our last meeting, we had a presentation from Mass Housing, which may be relevant for your committee, and I know my, our committee is interested in your housing residential presentation. Will you be able to get us some information about who is coming to speak, and any sort of formal information about that, so we can get that out? And I think for all of these, we should get them out to the community at large. But certainly, I think that, as you mentioned, there are other groups as well that are going on, like the, you know, the age-friendly communities, which may be a particular invitation that would make sense to extend for some of these panels.
We do have the three panelists. One actually is Matt Daggett, from the Special Permit Residential Development Ad Hoc Committee. He'll be presenting on mansionization and tear-down and that kind of thing, because he's done quite a bit of analysis of Lexington's tear-downs. And Liz Rust, who was just here, will present on affordable housing. She's an expert, because we contract with her, and she's so very good at it. And Chris Clutchman, who is a Lexington resident and housing planning expert, and Director of the State Housing Choice Program, will also present on March 21st. And that's at DPW in the cafeteria, and we're very likely going to have those flyers and all of that ready by the end of this week.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hay, Mr. Pato.
So as the board knows, I'm the board's liaison to the CPAC, and I really appreciate the work that's going on. I'm just going to take this opportunity to reiterate to residents who are watching, that this is about our community, and the, this will be a good plan if, in fact, we all participate and share our aspirations, our fears, our desires for what the community will be in the future. And make sure that you participate electronically or in person, or both. This is a long process, and it's one that you have not yet missed out on. So do come, and I'm looking forward to evolving. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pato. I want to thank you for your presentation tonight. I'm assuming that you have, are beginning to coordinate well with our new Public Information Officer to help push out your meetings and upcoming important programs that are out there, even the new website when it's up, so that the community can continue to be engaged. I think that's important. Have we done any outreach through, like, the schools, to reach the school-age parent?
Yes, we have the ability, and we have used the, all of the PTO lists. The school department's been terrific about helping us reach all the parents through the electronic backpack.
Okay, great. So I actually did just pull up your website, and it's beautiful. Nice job. Mr. Lucente.
Thank you, Ray, and Sarah, and Carol for presenting, but also to the entire committee for all the work you're doing. I know this is a lot to coordinate. It's a lot of hours and energy, and we appreciate it. These things can't happen, a comp plan can't happen without people. So this is, this is great, and much appreciated. I feel like you've been doing a good job getting the word out. I mean, we see the signs out. It's been a lot of effort there. Have you felt the sessions have been attended as expected, over-attended, under-attended? What's your current take on that?
I've been satisfied. I don't think anyone should be disappointed with the turnout that we've had. I think even, you know, the planning board workshop last week was rescheduled because of a storm, and even with that, I've heard that the turnout was about 30 people, and that's not bad.
Yeah.
On a weeknight, in the winter, to come out, I think that's not bad at all. The World Cafe events, I think, were attended, 120 people for the three events. I, when I'm doing a comprehensive plan, I try to keep a running tally, so I'll, I'll try to let you know how many people, and I can't guarantee that they are all individual participation moments. Some people might participate in more than one event, but I think it's been good. There's so many different channels of information. It's hard to get into people's attention, but we're doing everything, we can't, we're using every means possible, but if you have others you'd like us to use, let us know.
That was my follow-up question. Are there segments of the population you feel, at this point, you haven't connected with, or haven't been able to reach? You know, when you look at sort of what the feedback is that you're getting, is it, is it sort of in one pocket, or does it seem like it's fairly spread out amongst, you know, the demographics of town?
I think I could say it's been both. We've had a good turnout and a good variety of residents participating, but I, and we've reached out to groups like Korean Americans of Lexington, the IAL, COLLEX, I guess I'm duplicating CAL, the ABCL. But I also think we can do more, and will do more, to do targeted outreach, to go to them, and not just expect them to come here, to this building, but to go where they are, if they'll welcome us to get their feedback.
So I really like the, I think it was called Bang the Table. So that sounds very exciting and interesting, and I think that's a good way to, you know, in today's day and age, with technology, people may just be more apt to participate in that way, so-
I know I would.
Yeah. No, excited to see that, that come together. And I, I received as a gift about a year ago, from a former Lexington resident, a comp, the comp plan from 1968, I believe. So it was interesting to read through, because a lot of the same issues that we dealt with then, we're dealing with now, so it's very interesting.
You weren't even born yet.
I was not born, yeah, no. But it's still very interesting. A lot of, you know, school, yeah. School growth and all that, it was really good. I'll bring a copy-
I'd love to see that. Yeah, we would love to see that.
Thank you again.
Thank you, Mr. Lucente. Mr. Sandin?
Yes, I'd like to thank you for your work on this as well. I'm fascinated by the working groups that you're, you're talking about, and you've labeled one of the working groups Economic Development. That gives a lot of territory. I was wondering what, what the scope of economic development is, from your perspective.
The scope of economic development for the working group is very broad. It's, it's the areas that you would imagine, Hartwell Ave, Lexington Center, but it's also East Lexington. It's Sunnyside? I'm not saying that right, am I? The neighborhood on Lowell Street? Countryside, thank you.
Yeah.
Countryside. So we have a lot of pockets, Merritt, Spring, so we really have to look at those. And we also, when you think about economic development, it's very often, people kind of think they know what it means, but formally, it means wealth retention and job creation. You, and the ability to retain the wealth that's created in the community by the economic activity. That profile, the mix of those things is going to really vary, depending on whether you're a Lexington or a gateway city. But we pretty much know what balance we want. But we also have some employment issues, and here's where economic development overlaps with transportation, for example. We need to be able to get people to the jobs here in Lexington. And for the center, there's a lot of business, restaurants, for example, in the center, who have a difficult time getting their employees here on the weekends, and that's when you want, that's, that's their busy time. So it's, it'll be transportation. How do we get people to their work if they're working out of Lexington? How do they, how do we get them here if they're working in Lexington? It's keeping, increasing the viability of our existing commercial districts, but also trying to explore whether we can promote additional economic activity in some of the smaller commercial areas without, you want, you don't want to create rehabilitation to the point where you're not going to be able to maintain the businesses that are already there. So that, that's, with economic development, there's an arc of progress, and then there's a golden moment, and then sometimes you can see things teeter. It's almost too much of a good thing. Your rents might be so strong that you can't attract anything but certain types of businesses, and you might then lose some variety. So economic development has to- to be very, very broad.
Can I just add something? So, in the workshop that we had with the planning board last week, last week, the economic development, I think what we were focused on trying to hear from the citizens who were able to attend that workshop was, you know, what areas of town do they think of when they think of economic development? Large commercial developments? The center of town? Or is it the smaller, you know, what areas would they really want us to focus on as a town going forward? I think that was a big question. And trying to understand what the benefits of focusing on those areas might be in terms of specific impacts, you know, reduction in tax, property taxes, or was it, you know, and they gave us specific responses. But also understanding what they think the negative impacts of sort of focused economic development in certain areas would be. So, that was the gist of the discussion. But one of the things I just want to piggyback on what you said is the way that we're thinking about this plan is we're trying to understand it in fairly classic divisions of economic development, transportation, housing, you know, public facilities, and very traditional groups. But we have struggled with the fact that you can't talk about one without talking about all the others. And I -- the way we have talked about this plan evolving is more around the themes. And themes would be like livable cities, or I can't -- I don't have this off the top of my tongue. But we have a whole series of themes, which is more where we hope the plan will end up, in terms of how we describe it, because it's very difficult to talk only about economic development without talking about all the other things. So, I just wanted to clarify that.
Thank you so much. That was exactly where I was going with that question, is that these are highly interrelated topics, and you can't solve for one without solving for the other. So, I'm quite interested to hear how your process is going to take the outcomes of the working groups and integrate them into an overarching vision, where they're all interconnected. And speaking of things that are all interconnected, the Board of Selectmen last year passed a Sustainable Action Plan and a Getting Net Zero Emissions Plan. And I'd be interested in understanding how the comprehensive plan is going to be integrating those things into their process.
Thank you, Mr. Sandin. Any questions or comments from the audience? So, Mr. Canali's going to need the microphone.
Richard Canali, Planning Board. Just a couple of things. So, when we set this process up a little over a year ago, and decided to do this Comprehensive Plan Advisory Committee, it has been more than what we had expected, just in terms of the 12 or 13 members, in terms of the diversity that they bring, and the different levels of interaction is just been amazing. I think you can be really proud of this group. When we also set it up, we wanted to make sure that even though the planning board has the responsibility for signing off on it, that we made the conscious effort right at the beginning to ensure that there was policy advice and direction from the three major elected boards, from the Selectmen, School Committee, and the Planning Board. And so, we do have two liaisons from each of those boards to give that policy guidance to staff and to the committee when they need it. Just to remind the Selectmen that you have Mr. Pato, which is great. But you lost Selectmen Sicolo, and you still owe us a liaison. And we would really appreciate a second one. The other thing, just to comment, in terms of the numbers of people and the feedback, one of the things that sort of struck me is, and we talked about some of the common themes in prioritizing, that the diversity that we've had at the different workshops, and we had different people come to different venues. Last week, at the Planning Board Workshop, I conducted a group of about a dozen on transportation. And most of these were not the usual -- a lot of them weren't the usual suspects. But just, and some of them hadn't gone to any other meeting. And it's just that although, I think, Lexington residents span the whole gamut of reactions, and you can find people with diametrically opposing views on certain issues, that there does seem to be some common themes that seem to be coming forth from all the different groups. And hopefully, we can distill that.
30 seconds.
Yeah. We can distill that into, hopefully, a cohesive whole. So, again, I -- we're pleased, the planning board is pleased with how things are going so far. Well, obviously, we've had a couple of hiccups with the staff, but we're now fully staffed, and we're fully back on track.
Thank you, Mr. Canali. And, Mr. Canali, the board is fully staffed as of this evening. So, it's on a future agenda for us to address our liaison assignments. So, you will be hearing from us soon. Any further questions or comments from the audience? Seeing none, I want to thank you for this presentation tonight, and have a great evening.
Thank you for the opportunity.
So, now we'll move on to item number four, which is the 2019 Annual Town Meeting. So, for this discussion, colleagues, because we're going to cover a lot of ground, and we're going to try to cover it as non -- in a non-complicated way. Does everybody have the article position chart that should have been at your place? Looks like this. Does everybody have a listing of the consent agendas items that was sent to us by the Capital Expenditures Committee?
Yeah.
It's a grid. And you should have the 2019 potential consent agenda articles. That was developed for us by staff. A copy of the 2018, 2017, and 2016 consent agenda items. So, that should be one, two, three, five pages. And does everybody have a warrant?
I have one.
Or electronically. It's attached to the --
I have your paper.
You brought your paper. Wow. It is attached to the agenda item in Novus. Okay. So, what I would like to do is to walk through the articles, using the article position chart as our guide. What I did is, I took a stab at assigning presenters for each article. Mr. Malloy has reviewed that. And what I will say is at the -- excuse me, Ms. Hay?
Switch some of his around since I saw it.
Switch some of what around? No, actually, instead of XX, it now says MS. Otherwise, nothing has changed. Anyway. And so, it's pretty much broken out at the moment in equal weight. I think we each have seven, and, Mr. Sandin, you might have eight. I'm sorry. But in the end, when we get into IPs and consent agendas, that whole number shifts. You will see, as typically is my belief, if something is near and dear to your heart, you are most likely not the presenter, that somebody else is presenting that article. And there are some other ones, like CPA. As Mr. Pato is the member from the board, he would be the one that would present for that. So, starting at the top of the page, a couple of other background things. The citizen articles, we asked to see those motions. Those motions are not due to staff until a week from now, so that we'll be seeing the citizens' motions on the 18th at our meeting. So, as we talk about taking positions, I'm not sure any of us would feel comfortable taking a position on a citizen's article, not knowing what the motion is. Because we did have them all -- we did have all the presentations, but most of them had to go back and work on their motion. So, starting with article number four, which is the CPA, Potential Surcharge Reduction from 3% to 1%. I have Ms. Hay as the presenter. This does not appear on anybody's list as a potential consent item. I will say, Mr. Malloy and I have been working with the resident who's bringing this article forward, and it is looking like this will be IPed. Okay? Looking like. So, unless anybody wants to put this on consent or take a position, I'm going to move on. Okay. Article number five, Establish Qualifications for Tax Differrals. I have that as I am the presenter. I do not see that on anybody's list of potential, as being a potential candidate for consent. This is the article where we're raising the eligibility limit, I believe, from 70,000 to 75,000. That's correct, Ms. Exteal? Okay. Is -- does anyone feel that should be on consent? No? Anybody willing to take a position?
Yes.
Ms. Hay?
Yes, I'm in favor.
Mr. Pato?
I am in favor.
I am in favor. Mr. Lucente?
I am in favor.
So, Mr. Sandin, before we put you on the spot, you have three options, actually four. Yes, no, recuse, or wait. So, you have four options. Don't feel any pressure.
And I will say, I waited a couple of weeks last year, at this time.
It's not uncommon for the new person to wait, so you can read the article and understand where we're at?
And ask questions.
That sounds fine.
I know you're in the audience a lot, but there's still a lot to get caught up on.
I tend to lean in this direction, but I think you're probably right. I should wait.
Okay. Moving on to article number six. This is the citizens' article for the cremation facility, potential cremation facility at Westview. Mr. Sandin, I have you as the presenter. This, I do not believe, is an item for consent. And as we haven't seen the motions, I think we're all just -- we're waits across the board.
Do we have -- I see that we have the capital expenditures list, but it occurred to me when you said on anybody's list. Do we have a list for appropriation, or is it just our staff list and the capital expenditures list?
That's all that we have in hand at the moment.
That's all we have right now?
But it -- we do poll the board, capital expenditures, appropriation, and school committee. Gets to wait as well.
And we don't have theirs either.
We do not have theirs either.
Thank you.
Do we have a particular sort of status of Article Six?
So, it's a citizens' petition. So, we don't even know what the motion is. And we don't know if it's going to be IPed. We do not.
Okay.
So, Article Seven, which is also a citizens' petition for the Economic Development Strategy. Mr. Malloy and I have been working with this citizen. This one most likely will also be IPed. We'll have more news for you later on that one. And I would be the presenter. Number Eight, Funding for Sustainability Actions, is also a citizens' petition. Mr. Lucente, I have you as the presenter. We are waiting to see more on that one from the motion. Number Nine, Sustainability Director, Citizens' Petition. Mr. Lucente, I have you as the presenter. Same as Number Eight, we're still waiting for the updated motion. Number Ten, Appropriate to Post-Employment Insurance Liability Fund. Mr. Sandin, I have you as the presenter. I would be recused on this. No one has this on their consent. Does anyone want to take a position? Or do you want to wait? Mr. Malloy, this is for how much money? Article 10?
One million eight hundred and eighty-five thousand, four hundred and eighty-six?
Is what's in the warrant correct?
No.
I just rattled off the top of my head.
I haven't changed.
Okay. So, a million, a million eight, almost a million nine. Ms. Hay?
I believe that we actually had this conversation last month, and we agreed that while we wanted to revisit the policy, we were not going to do so midstream in this budget cycle. And so, we were going to support this appropriation this year. So, I think, having had that conversation, come to that conclusion, I am willing to say I support this now.
Okay. Mr. Pato?
So, I too support it. But I recall that in our Brown Book budget, we reduced it by removing the tax levy component. So, it's slightly lower than what was in the warrant.
It was like 63,000 or something?
Yeah, it's like 75, or it's small, but it's slightly different.
It's 1.8 something.
Yeah.
Okay. So, do you want to take a position, or not?
I said I support it.
Oh, sorry. Didn't hear that. Mr. Lucente?
I would be a yes on this as well.
Mr. Sandin?
I need some more information.
Got it. Article 11, which we used to formally affectionately refer to as Article Four, is where we find the budget this year. Appropriate the FY 2020 operating budget that I assigned to myself. Obviously, it's not on the consent. Otherwise, we could have a one-night town meeting. Is anyone ready to take a position, Ms. Hay?
So, I -- I'm not sure I am right now, just because, as I said, I want to review the -- I think we're fine on it, but I think there were enough moving parts that I just want to double-check. Because now, you made me nervous, Mr. Pato. You reminded me of something that we discussed that I'd forgotten, so.
Mr. Pato?
So, I'm on the same boat. I'm waiting.
Okay. So, if there's any particular information you're waiting for from staff, if you're a wait, that would be helpful. I mean, I understand Mr. Sandin has a different learning curve than us, but...
No, it's just the Brown Book just went out. I want to go back and review it, even though I know what the reported changes were. I actually want to look.
No, no, that's fine. I just want to make sure that if there's anything we're looking for, it's clear to step.
No anticipated concern.
Got it. I am a wait. Mr. Lucente?
I'll be a wait, just based on that same premise of the Brown Book just got out. And I want to just do one look-through before I give it the thumbs up.
Mr. Sandin?
A wait.
And, Mr. Malloy, I want to thank you and the staff for getting the Brown Book posted to the web. And it's at the printer, correct?
Yes.
And it will be ready for TMMA Information Night, correct?
Yes.
Got it. Moving on to Article Number 12, Appropriate the FY 2020 Enterprise Funds Budget. This is assigned to Mr. Pato. It's not on a consent. Ms. Hay, you ready?
I'm actually probably going to take a wait on almost everything tonight, just because I realize that, with the exception of things that we've fully vetted at the table already, I'm not ready.
Okay. Mr. Pato?
So, I'm a wait also, but I don't anticipate an issue here.
Okay. I am a wait, but no issue. Mr. Lucente?
A wait.
Mr. Sandin is a wait. Article 13, Establish and Continue Departmental Revolving Funds. This is assigned to Ms. Hay. This did appear on Capital's list for the consent. Ms. -- Mr. Cantor, could you give us a little insight into that?
Inasmuch as this is just authorizing a dollar top, we do not consider this to be a controversial issue. Every year, it goes by deferring to you to, if you need to, later on, make a change. So, it's not even bound by the vote taken at town meeting. So, we thought it was appropriate.
Thank you for that information. Ms. Hay? You're a wait, but how do you feel about it on consent?
I'm not sure. Have we had this on the consent in past years? I don't think we have.
It was not there last year.
Yeah. So, I think I'm going to need to think about that.
So, are we jumping?
Go ahead.
Good. So, I'm okay with it being on consent. My recollection is that appropriation has in the past had some reservations on consent. But I think Mr. Cantor is absolutely right. This really is something that belongs on consent.
And you're a wait.
Sure, I'll be a wait, but...
You could be something else.
Well, consent's a yes. So, I will say yes.
Okay. All right. I am fine with it on consent. Mr. Lucente?
I'm fine with it on consent, and I could be a yes on this.
Right. I think, to Mr. Pato's point, definitionally, if it's on the consent, you're a yes, which is, I think, why I'm just saying.
And, Mr. Sandin, it's a wait. So, we have one, two waits. So, I think we can say it's not 100% for consent yet. Moving on to 14, which is A through M, is the CPA articles. Ms. Vanellosa is scheduled to be with us at our meeting next week on the 11th for presentation on all of these. So, I'm going to say we are, unless you tell me differently, we're a wait across the board. Capital is recommending 14C Archives and Records Management for 20,000 to the consent. They are also recommending CPA Debt Service for a little over 3 million. And they are also recommending the administrative budget for 150,000. In prior years, the board has only done the CPA Debt Service to the consent. And Mr. Pato would be the presenter on all of 14.
So, actually, if this page we have in front of us, that's the labeled 2018 Annual Town Meeting Consent Articles, Board of Selectmen, is that approved, or was that what we discussed? Because that also has the CPA administrative budget on it.
Ms. Exteal's?
The 2018 Annual Town Meeting.
It was put on consent. Sorry. I missed that one.
So, I would, yeah, I think the administrative budget, to me, seems, you know, mandatory and necessary, without getting into any of the politics of anything else that's under the CPA. I would support that being on the consent agenda. I think, given the citizen article that's coming forward, I'm less inclined to say that the debt service is a consent item.
It's most likely going to be IPed. Mr. Pato?
So... So, L, which is the debt service, is a required expense, so I do believe it belongs in consent, and I agree with administrative budget being on consent.
So I understand that the debt service is mandatory, and therefore we have to vote it, but I do feel like town meeting may want to discuss what it is, and I'm not sure where else, especially given that the citizen may be IPing their article, but it has started the conversation. I'm wondering whether it's still appropriate to allow that conversation to go forward. I may get there, I'm just, my initial instinct is not there.
I would think the conversation would take place under the citizen article.
Right, I agree that any conversation with respect to what the obligations are and what CPA would be used for would occur under that article, independent of the specific requests for this year.
Okay. So I can support debt service on the consent and the administrative budget on the consent? Mr. Lucente?
I'm with Ms. Hay on the leaving the debt service off consent and leaving administrative budget on the consent.
Got it.
I just, I think that I'm uncomfortable right this moment, maybe I'll become more comfortable as I digest it a little, but it seems to me, given the change that Mr. Malloy talked about this evening as well, with the Minuteman School Fields, you know, that obviously changes some of the numbers, and so that theoretically could open up some can of worms about what's the debt service and what should the debt service be, as a motion maybe on, from the floor. I'm just, I'm uncomfortable right now with it, so.
Go ahead.
So I hear your discomfort, and perfectly fine with that. I don't believe there would be any change to the anticipated debt service. The CPC has taken a policy decision to not exceed fifty percent of annual revenues for debt service. We are currently over that, so there is no appetite on the CPC, the committee, to recommend any current projects for debt.
But this debt service still leaves debt to the CPA, correct? We're proposing three million ninety-four thousand and some change, right? That doesn't wipe out all the debt.
Agreed, but you couldn't increase this beyond what the CPC recommends, but...
So I think what I'm also hearing is he has a concern about having a place to have, I think where this conversation is going to take place is not clear yet, because we don't know what the citizens' petition is doing.
Right, which is why I started with, I understand your discomfort, and that's perfectly fine, just wanted to not leave something hanging.
I would agree that citizens are going to want to have a conversation about this debt. We've heard about this many, many, many times over the, and there's a lot of confusion.
Your thoughts about the administrative budget on the consent agenda? Are you okay with that, or are you waiting? So this is going to be challenging, because Mr. Sandin's waiting, we might be able to say we have almost consent agenda items, because the deal is, you have to have, everybody's got to agree. Mr. Cantor, any comments on the CPA?
No, ma'am, I was just standing here in case you asked, as you did before, what our rationale was.
I just had one question on process. With thirteen different items under Article Fourteen, does that mean that Mr. Pato would be presenting thirteen different statements, or how does this actually work?
Not necessarily. Mr. Pato?
Right, so the proponents are going to move the article and give the primary descriptions, I'll only be presenting the Board's recommendations on particular items. Typically, in the past, we've grouped some, and the presentation might include those together, and then some that might be more nuanced would get an independent presentation. It really depends on how it evolves.
Okay. Moving on to Sixteen, Sixteen has multiple components, this one is assigned to Ms. Hay.
Did you skip fifteen?
I skipped fifteen, because it's on the bottom of the page. So Fifteen is assigned to Mr. Lucente. This is recommended to us by staff, and it has appeared on the consent agenda in the past. It does not appear on Capital's list this year. We are still waiting for an update on this article from Mr. Malloy, and I believe that's coming at our meeting on the eleventh. Mr. Cantor?
Just wanted to comment that, per the moderator's rule, any objection by any member on any of the primary boards or at town meeting, any single member at town meeting will cause the item to come off the consent agenda. So I would like to point out that, in the absence of a yes on our list, it's already
Thank you, Mr. Cantor, but you might find Mr. Malloy's presentation informative, enlightening, entertaining, one of those adjectives, I don't know. No pressure, Mr. Malloy.
I was just wondering what the dollar amount is. Is it the same that we've had for, like, the last five years?
It's a hundred and twenty-five thousand.
Yeah.
Hundred and twenty-five thousand.
Right, thank you.
And it's seventy-five thousand for the...
Seventy-five thousand for the pine meadows improvements, and then fifty thousand for Recreation Community Needs Assessment.
Okay. Moving on to Sixteen, Appropriate for Municipal Capital Projects and Equipment, this is assigned to Ms. Hay. Multiple, so it's A through P, multiples of these have been recommended by Capital. So Capital is recommending A, the hydrants, that has been on the consent in the past, B, storm drainage in the Nipody's compliance, C, the comprehensive watershed storm management study and implementation, D, townwide culvert replacement, which has also been on in the past, G, sidewalk improvements, which is the lump sum that we do for sidewalk improvements, the eight-hundred thousand, J, townwide signalization improvements, K, street improvements, L, transportation mitigation, and those were the ones within Sixteen that Capital is recommending. Any comments on that, Ms. Hay?
So I think that I would not want to see the comprehensive watershed on the consent, because I think that's something that's a conversation about where we're going with the storm water management as we move forward. We've talked, we've had conversations about whether or not we are going to be going to make some changes in how we handle storm water management, so I think, again, that is something that may have enough, lack of clarity, that I'm not sure that is appropriate. I'm not sure I see anything else that is not in the sort of typical annual allocation on the rest of that list.
So you're okay with Capital's recommendation?
Except for C.
What about B?
Oh, that, I think that may fall into the same, because we've had the update to the Nipody's program this year, there may be questions, because we are increasing what we need to do, and it is significantly going to increase our costs moving forward as well. So again, I think that may be something that is subject to conversation. So I think B and C I would take off, but I'm good with the rest of what's on there.
Mr. Pato, anything to add?
Nope, I'm okay with the remainder.
Okay. I'm okay with the remainder, Mr. Lucente?
Yep, same as all the other members.
Okay. Mr. Sandin's still a wait. Moving on to Seventeen, Appropriate for Water System Improvements, this is assigned to Mr. Sandin. This appears on Capital's list, this appears on our staff recommended list, and this has been done in the past. Any concerns, Ms. Hay?
No.
Mr. Pato?
No.
I'm good with it, Mr. Lucente?
I'm fine with it.
Okay. Eighteen, Appropriate for Waste Water Systems Improvements, assigned to Mr. Sandin, same as the article before. It appears on our staff recommended list, it's on Capital's, and it was done last year. Ms. Hay? You okay with consent?
I think I am.
Eighteen?
Yeah, I'm just reading it. Yeah, I think I'm okay with it.
Mr. Pato?
Yes.
I'm fine, Mr. Lucente?
Yes, I'm fine with it.
Okay. Moving on to Nineteen, Appropriate for School Capital Projects and Equipment, this is assigned to Mr. Pato, doesn't appear on anybody's list, nobody's asking for it. Moving to Twenty, Appropriate for Public Facilities Capital Projects, this is assigned to me. There are one, two, three, four, five that appear on our staff recommended list, Capital's recommended list, and we did them last year, and those are, A, Public Facilities Bid Documents, B, both components of Facility and Site Improvements, that's the Building Floor Program and the School Paving and Sidewalks Program, C, the Municipal Building Envelopes and Systems, D, the School Building Envelopes and Systems, and F, Public Facilities Mechanical and Electrical System Replacements. Any concerns on those five, Ms. Hay?
No.
Mr. Pato?
No.
I don't have any concerns on those five, Mr. Lucente?
No concerns.
Moving on to Twenty-One, Rescind Prior Borrowing Authorizations, I would be the presenter. This appears on Capital's list, but not on staff's. Mr. Cantor, any comment on that?
We took that position because these are appropriations that the staff has determined are no longer needed for their original purpose, and therefore, we would like to see those authorizations rescinded. It's not authorizing cash, it's just reducing the financing authorization.
Thank you. Ms. Hay?
I actually see the rationale for putting this on the consent agenda.
Okay. Mr. Pato?
I agree.
I can agree to that, Mr. Lucente?
Before I agree, I'd love to hear from Mr. Malloy or Ms. Extell why they didn't think it was appropriate, or maybe it just got overlooked.
It wasn't overlooked, it was just that we didn't have the dollar amount yet, or, so there's no objection to including it as a consent agenda item.
Then I would support that.
Thank you. Moving on to Twenty-Two, Establish, Dissolve, and Appropriate to and from Specified Stabilization Funds is assigned to Mr. Sandin. It does not appear on anyone's consent. Not to from. Article Twenty-Three, Appropriate to the General Stabilization Fund is assigned to Mr. Sandin. This does appear on the Capital list if it is IPed. Mr. Cantor?
We've been advised it is going to be IPed, so therefore it's a clean yes.
Okay. And it did appear last year, Ms. Hay?
Fine with that.
Mr. Pato?
Yes.
I'm fine with it. Mr. Lucente?
Yep, I'm fine.
You okay?
Yeah.
Woo, his first one! Congratulations. Moving on to Twenty-Four, Appropriate from Debt Service Stabilization Fund, this is also assigned to Mr. Sandin. Capital has it on their consent, it occurred last year. Ms. Hay?
I'm fine with it again.
Mr. Pato?
Yes.
I'm fine with it, Mr. Lucente?
Yes. Sure.
Sure, okay. See, once you do the first one, they just all fall in behind it. Moving on to Twenty-Five, Appropriate for Prior Year's Unpaid Bills, of which we have how many, Mr. Malloy? One, two? We have something, I know.
It would just be the one. I don't know that we've actually received it yet, have we?
Mr. Lucente?
I think...
Time's a ticking.
Yeah, Ms. Katzenbeck has been working with the issue.
All right, so that doesn't appear on anyone's consent. Twenty-Six, amend, and that one was assigned to Mr. Lucente, Twenty-Six, amend the nineteen Operating Enterprise and CPA Budgets is assigned to me, does not appear on anyone's consent. Twenty-Seven, Appropriate for Authorized Capital Improvements is assigned to Mr. Pato, staff recommended that. Capital did not, Twenty-Seven.
Well, if it's being IPed, I'm sure we'd agree with it, but we weren't aware at the time we made this list.
We don't know what's being IPed, so you gave us information on an earlier one.
Well, it's whether we have a prior approved project that we need to supplemental fund is what this is, and we just, we weren't aware if there are going to be any. Usually, there haven't been, I'm happy to say.
Any update?
As of right now, we don't know of any, and so we'll have a recommendation for the next selectman's meeting, and it probably will be to IP it.
All right, so that's a wait.
And I can, think I can safely say that we would not oppose that, we would be in favor of that if that's the case.
Thank you. Moving on to Twenty-Eight, Confirm the Street Acceptance and Title for A Portion of Pelham Road, this is assigned to Mr. Sandin. This appears on the staff list, but not on Capital's? Right, because it's not Capital's, so Ms. Hay?
As this is just a technical correction, I would be comfortable with this. I think we would have some amount of presentation on it, like, just an explanation of it, I think, so that people understand what it is. Do we do that?
Consent comes with explanation. You just vote them all in one lump sum.
Yeah, so, because it is just a technical correction, so it is an appropriate thing for consent agenda, and perhaps just explaining what it is at the information session is adequate, I don't know. I guess I see no reason not to put it on the consent agenda, somebody may pull it off.
Mr. Pato?
That's exactly what I was thinking. I think it's appropriate for consent, but I suspect someone will ask to pull it out.
So I agree, I think it's appropriate for consent, and you might be able to get the message out to most of town meeting, I'm just concerned how the audience and other people in town would see it. I mean, these things typically just kind of flow without a problem anyway, so I think it's, we're kind of on the fence on this one. Mr. Lucente?
I think I would just lean toward, don't put it on the consent agenda, just with anyone's reservations, if we added all of our reservations up, it should come off. It just makes sense.
Okay. Twenty-Nine, Civil Service Withdrawal is assigned to Mr. Pato, I am recused on this item.
I don't think anybody gives this call to consent.
Thirty, amend the town bylaws to reduce banned polystyrene materials, citizens' article, so we'll be getting an update on the eighteenth, this is assigned to Mr. Lucente. Thirty-one, amend town bylaws to reduce banned single-use plastic beverage straws and stirrers, citizens' article, update on the eighteenth, assigned to Mr. Lucente. Thirty-two, Addition of Capital Expenditures Committee Related Provisions to the Representative Town Meeting and Selectment Town Manager Act is assigned to me, it does not appear on anyone's consent. Thirty-three, Rename Board of Selectmen to Select Board, assigned to Ms. Hay. Thirty-four, Rename Board of Selectmen to Select Board in the General Bylaw, assigned to Ms. Hay. Thirty-five, amend Article Three of Chapter One Eighteen, citizens' article, will have an update on the eighteenth, assigned to Mr. Pato. Thirty-six, Implement an Outcomes-Based Approach to Town Building Projects, citizens' article, assigned to Ms. Hay, we will be getting an update on the eighteenth to the language. Thirty-seven, Rename the Board of Selectmen to the Select Board in the Zoning Bylaw, assigned to Ms. Hay. Thirty-eight, amend the zoning bylaw and zoning map for One Eighty-Six Bedford Street, the owner's petition, assigned to Mr. Pato. Mr. Malloy, do we have a sense, or I don't know if Ms. Kowalski could answer, of where this stands with the planning board, of where they are in their public hearing process, and are they going to be able to make the timeline for town meeting with enough time for people to digest it?
Madam Chairman, it remains to be seen, but they will take that up again, the hearing continues tomorrow evening. They recognize that March eleventh is the deadline for the Board's recommendation to town meeting.
Okay. We'll stay tuned. And Article Thirty-nine, amend the zoning bylaw, limited site plan review, which is a citizens' article, assigned to Mr. Lucente, and we'll have an update on that on the eighteenth. Any other general questions or discussions or presenters you want to change at this point? This is obviously the first pass, we will be looking at this at every meeting leading up to and during town meeting. Any concerns at this point? Anything you want to have a special, you need a presentation on? I'll let you think, will I take Mr. Cantor's question or comment?
My heart sank when I heard the eighteenth was when the, especially the citizens' articles could have their motions to it. It puts us and the appropriation committee in an extremely awkward position of not knowing even a proponent's intentions for us to write our report. It leaves us risky for a pending, which we prefer not to do for the benefit of town meeting members, and so I don't know how to resolve it at this point, since you've already established the eighteenth, but I would ask, as I have passed to Carolyn Koznoff, that if there are any knowledge of IPs or any other insight into which direction the proponent's going, because in the absence of that, we are either faced with making a recommendation based on the article and what's been discussed with you when they individually came forward, which is perhaps long before they've made up their mind on their motion, and so I just, I'm pleading that you've put us in an awkward position only because of the timing on the citizen article, so if anything can be done in terms of illuminating...
So, Mr. Cantor, I hear your concern.
Yeah.
The issue we have is that the citizens do not have to have their language into the town manager's office until the eleventh, which means it would not make our packet for the eleventh, we meet on the eleventh, and we don't meet again until the eighteenth. Whether the manager's office felt comfortable sharing their language with your committee, I will let you work that out offline with the manager, the assistant town manager, but it's this board won't be able to review that language until the eighteen.
Thank you for that clarification. I would sincerely hope that whatever is passed in, which is a public document at that point... I would sincerely hope that whatever is passed in, which is a public document at that point, that it could be sent immediately to us electronically, so we could avoid that. Thank you for that.
Yes, it's just a matter of, we will not entertain something that lands at our place moments before we sit down, especially not something for town meeting. What is your deadline for your report? When do you, when is your drop dead go on a press date?
We have, our committee has previously held as its policy, we would try to have our report on the table for the first night of town meeting, because normally, the first week is the non-financial stuff. That's complicated this year, if I can just examine it a little further. We are commenting on some non-financial items because they have bearing upon the capital process at town meeting. So I've spoken with the moderator, and she said that when we have the moderator's meeting determining when things would be brought forward, she would entertain a request at that time that for any article in which either financial committee is making action on, that would normally come in the first week, she would entertain, but didn't guarantee that she could delay it to the second week, which would then put us back in sync. So, back to your question, we normally try to have it on for the first night of town meeting. Appropriation normally has it on for the opening night, not a week before, and we may have to fall into their track of having it for the opening night of town meeting rather than a week before. So that's our conflict, depending on these kinds of things.
So how many, if I can ask, how many additional articles is this that you'd be commenting on outside the normal purview?
I don't have the count. It's something like three or four.
Okay, okay.
Some of the, one of them tonight, you said was already likely to be IPed, so that simplifies the process for us.
Yeah. Stay tuned, there's a lot of moving parts right now. So anything further to discuss regarding what we just covered here, which was assignment of articles, article positions, and considering our consent list? So since we are not, we do not have full consent for the consent, I will keep track of where we are, where we are at four, and then we'll see if we get to five. I know the moderator will be looking for that consent agenda in relatively soon-ish. We might have another week, maybe two, to finalize that, but we also need to hear back from appropriation and the school committee. Ms. Hay, anything final on this part?
No, I guess the only question I have is, are we putting a question out to appropriation and the school committee, or are we just waiting for them to come to us?
I will follow up with their chairs, since I have not heard from them.
Okay.
Mr. Pato?
Nothing additional.
Thank you. Mr. Lucente?
Nothing right now.
Mr. Sandin? No? Okay. So then the last thing we need to talk about is, and we brought this up at our meeting last week, Mr. Lucente was not here, Mr. Sandin was in the room, but sitting over there, not sitting over here. We discussed our board report to town meeting, because we all agreed that the board should make a report to town meeting this year. And the topics we reviewed that we thought we should cover, and I'm going to bring this list up again to see if we want to refine it, or if anything has sprung to mind that we need to update on, was the SPRD, the Special Permit Residential Development Policy Committee, and an update from you. The Residential Exemption Policy Task Force.
Study.
Study Committee, okay. Hartwell, an update on Hartwell, and update on our building projects, because as I keep saying, it's not all that often that we build from the ground up, so we need to do an update on our building projects. And Ms. Hay suggested that we do a little bit of our review of goals, like some of our bigger goals and where we are with that. So Mr. Lucente, I don't know what else is in your mind?
I think that covers a lot of, you know, what I would, the goals were one thing, you know, that came to mind that I think we should share a little broadly with the community that's going to be at the town meeting. So I think that's a, that's a good topic as well to add, but I don't have anything else that springs to mind.
Okay. Mr. Sandin, you want to think?
I'm fine.
Okay, okay. So we will work on fleshing this out. There's one, two, three, four, five topics. Isn't that convenient? So we should probably assign these, and everybody should write something up. So Ms. Hay?
I'm thinking that the first two go to me and to Joe.
I'm thinking that, that's, unless you want to, you can write on something else if you want.
It seems to be a silly work project at this stage to have to interview somebody else to write what I know.
Or you could write and have them review it.
Yeah. Well, that makes sense, actually, that we should all sort of circulate what we've written.
Well, my hope would be, we're writing, so we're reviewing. Yeah.
That's an issue.
Oh, right. It's an open meeting law.
Unless we do it at this table.
We do it at this table.
You might want to just send it out to everybody, if that's okay, but then have it on the next...
Right, it would be on the agenda.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
That makes sense.
Yeah, yeah, no, no, it wouldn't go the other way. No, 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 silly people.
Can't write in person.
So, Mr. Lucente, Hartwell building projects or review of goals?
Um...
And since review of goals does not make sense for Mr. Sandin...
Yeah, I think I'm stuck with review of goals.
Or Hartwell.
Or Hartwell. No, I think, oh, cool, because you haven't picked yours yet, yeah.
You could take two, if you want to be an overachiever.
I'm fine with either, Madam Chair, whatever you prefer.
Pick one.
I'll do, I'll do Hartwell. Since you've got the goals, Madam Chair.
So, Mr. Sandin, you have our building projects.
Okay.
Will...
I'd be happy with that.
Okay.
I'll be with Hartwell.
I'll let you guys work it out. Mr. Cantor?
Just to follow up with the town manager's comment, you want Ms. Katzenbach to be sending it out, not any of you.
Yes, Mr. Cantor, we're aware. Thank you. So today's the fifth. We have the eleventh and the eighteenth, since this, this might be coming up on the twenty-fifth, we don't know. And it should be, I'm assuming, we talked about this, that we want to have a printed version, and a yes or no? Or just a spoken version?
I, I think when you and I initially spoke, just to throw it out there, when you and I initially spoke, I pictured this more like the oral report that the chairs give, as opposed to the written reports, which tend to have recommendations on specific articles. So I wasn't initially envisioning it as a written report. I'm open to that, but that hadn't been my thought, my, you know, my, the model was when, you know, the chair of CPC, the chair of AC, the chair of CEC get up, they talk about, you know, what they think are the pressing issues the town meeting should consider as they move forward, but the written report gets into individual article recommendations.
So, so I would advocate for a written report to be made available. I will cite precedents, and I've already done this several times over the past four years, where I have reported to this board with a short, one-page written report, and then reported it to town meeting. I did this on the adoption of property tax recognition of new growth when a building is being constructed and it's more than fifty percent of the value went up. That had been an issue that we were, was brought to town meeting, it was assigned to the board. We did the investigation work, I presented to this board, wrote it up, and then provided that to town meeting. And there were two or three others like that. And I like the idea that town meeting is able to digest what we're saying on, on a more substantive level with a material they can look at, not just listen to.
I'm just going to throw out there that the distinction, which I think is a distinction with the difference, is that that was reporting on a completed project. You know, you were making a recommendation with that. In this case, almost everything we're talking about is a work in progress, and we're giving an update, but it isn't, nothing's final.
So at least, I'm trying to remember which ones, not all of them were final. They were, what was the status after having had town meeting make and give the board a task or a request? So there was an expectation of a report. It went back in that form.
I think we also need to clarify, what's the expectation among all of us as far as length? And, I mean, I don't want to get into town meeting, and we take a night of town meeting with the five of us speaking. I think that would get very aggravating to town meeting. And I think it would do the opposite effect of updating them and more annoying them with too much information. And Mr. Malloy's going to be giving, you know, his speech. We want to make sure this is not duplicative information and that we keep it somewhat brief. I mean, I would, I would suggest we put a word limit on it or something, so we all can track, you know, toward a goal when we're writing our parts. And so it seems cohesive. And then are we all going to read them separately, or are we all going to have the chair read the...
We had the conversation last meeting when you weren't here.
Okay, I'm sorry.
We ended early. Just saying. And the feeling from this side of the table, because there was no one on, Ms. Seibert was all alone on that side of, it's getting late, and I have not, anyway, was that the chair should give the report.
All right, good.
So much for good ideas. Anyway.
I think that's a good idea.
And I had the impression from the last meeting that the chair would give the report, but not necessarily like the entire written report, but a summary of the report.
Correct.
Thank you.
And then, Mr. Malloy, I'll need to coordinate with you to make sure that I don't steal any of your lines, and you can steal ours if you want. Then it's less I have to say. Okay. So anything further on 2019 annual town meeting? No? There is no consent agenda this evening, so I will say our next meeting is next Monday night, March eleventh, 2019, at seven PM in this room. We do not have an executive session. We do not. So it'll be a seven PM meeting in this room, and I'll take a motion to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, we are adjourned.
I was in Florida while all of you were dealing with snow. I brought that, and unfortunately, I left them. I was supposed to have them, so I could patch it up there with me, but I couldn't have had them all at the end of school. But everybody gets a chocolate alleyway. This is supposed to be snacks for the weekend. I'll tell you, you can get them too.[1471.26]